February 12th. And we'll call this meeting to order and start with our pledge of allegiance.
Hold on a second, I'm gonna get a flag.
We should have one.
I should.
That's why I can't see. Yeah, there is. That's true.
One moment.
You're free to do this.
You can't see it?
Hello.
Yeah, hold on, I'm not sure the screen still lives at home.
Oh, that's nice. Okay, here we go.
Oi, oi.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, verity and justice. All right, first our agenda is to move the agenda. On her motion.
I will move the agenda.
Arnie, do we have a second?
A second.
Motion carries. To. Oh, yeah, I know. I'm just ahead of myself tonight. I'm like, woo! All right, so, um, any discussion or additions? Okay, let's go, everybody that agrees, say aye. If I'm any opposed, now motion carries. Okay, too excited. Next up is our consent agenda.
I'll move this consent agenda.
Thank you, Arnie. I'm not gonna say what she carries yet. Any additions or actually questions or comments? There are none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none, now motion carries. Okay, so our input, do we have two public input?
We do, we have Chris Green.
Okay, Chris Green, before he speaks, I'm gonna let you know that you may offer objective criticism of school operations and programs, but the board will not hear personal complaints concerning school personnel nor against any person connected with the school system. The time limit is three minutes. The board chair will direct the visitor to the appropriate means for board consideration and disposition of legitimate complaints involving individuals.
Okay. Definitely not negative. Woo, all right. Um, I just wanted to make the board aware, uh, we received notice from a corporation called SiteSafe. They've been contracted by Verizon Wireless, who's planning to put up a new structure in Charleston. And their plan is to begin, as they say, soon on that, but we have a 30-day window uh, to reply and comment any concerns we might have as it may affect 1420 signal. They do indicate that they're planning to use a, uh, detuning device, which will help eliminate them from interfering with our band, if there's always the possibility that it could. So, uh, we officially received this notice on the 9th. And we have a 30-day window if we want to raise any concern or ask any questions or comments that the board may have for how it may affect us and if so, what recourse we would have, uh, in that eventuality. So, wanted to make you aware of that, just, uh, as the heads of the radio stations and, uh, they listed me as the licensee. I believe that's you. So, uh, I hi- I just marked out at the bottom there, the 30-day window. Again, the device should prevent any level of interference, but there's always that what-if. Uh, I know I put on a radio station, uh, about two years ago and the minute we turned it on, we completely blanketed another radio station that we thought we had filtered out, but, uh, so we had to turn it off and start over. So, uh, I'm sure Verizon would prefer to not do that too. So, again, any questions or concerns we wanna put to them, you know, we've got 30 days to do that.
And I guess I would ask you as the most involved, are there any questions or concerns we should be raising?
I mean, really, I would just ask them to state in written form to us, should we turn this on and we find it does interfere, here's the course of action we will take to correct it. I, I would just ask for some level of assurance from them that, you know, how they would, uh, move forward in that situation.
So, I trust that you have had that conversation with them, or will have that conversation with them?
I will. I just wanted to make you aware of it first and foremost. And, uh, that that is coming, and by the way, any Verizon customers, business, there's enough power.
That's what I was just gonna ask, because, and it's one year where?
Charleston. I'll let him know.
Okay. All right. Anybody else? Any other questions?
It's gonna be right in the middle of the talk. Should, should we, um, give him permission under the word to write a letter to Verizon that has questions?
Do you need to write a letter, or you're just gonna make a phone call?
I, we can do it written, uh, just like they did. They're sending written, a written version of that, but they emailed it out just, you know, for the, you know, ensuring that we do receive it in a timely fashion. So, we can do the exact same, we've got up to 30 days to respond, as long as, if we send them a written letter, as long as it's postmarked, but if we send it email, same thing, it's time and date stamp when we send it, so.
But this would be perfectly safe, I would, I would move that, we as board give you permission to write the letter and give information to Verizon that if any concerns should be met.
Okay, no, I'd be down.
On our behalf.
Thank you, Arnie.
I certainly did.
Thank you. And anything else? All right, let's take a vote, Kevin.
Aye.
Arnie.
Aye.
Patty.
Aye.
Adrian.
Aye.
Michael, I as well, I'm sure carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so that was quick. And now we have our MHS student rep.
He has me.
There he is.
We have a flag right there today.
You have it, head of the team, right?
This is actually my first time here, you should listen to my background, you know. I'm actually Spencer Pedersen, the MHS president here, and, uh, pretty much what I just wanted to go over what, sorry about that. Some of the sports things that happened this weekend, we had wrestling districts, swim districts, and also some basketball games that were on Thursday. For swim districts, the boys got second. And Quentin, Carter, and Elliott are gonna be the people going to state, plus three, with three relay teams. For girls, they got first, and Allison, Avery, and then two relay teams are the main people going to state there. For our wrestling, we're taking 13 people to state. And most notable people, the ones that got first are Garen Castro at 106, Christian at 113, Trading Forks at 120, Reese Height at 132, and Arian at 175. Yeah, we also got, cheer team also got second in state this past weekend as well, and then we have ru- uh, swim state is this weekend, and then we have, uh, girls district wrestling is also this weekend. The statewide wrestling thing, meet, will be on the 24th. And then we have two basketball games coming up, and I'm pretty sure if we beat Card's Grove, we should have a playing game at home coming up soon. And things that happened at the school, we had the charity pageant just recently on the 4th, that went well. Um, uh, AP Psych also had their symposium, just, I think that was like three weeks ago. Um, and yep, that's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Will they sign our auction baskets at the Marshfield Champs?
No, we're actually doing a banquet, and they're gonna be there, yeah.
All right.
So if you wanna come and bid, I think the banquet's gonna be in April.
Well, since this is your first time here as, as the Marshall representative, you're welcome to state for a question meeting, we're doing a state poll. Would you like to hear your input on, um, you feel being relevant, uh, relevant to the students, and in my defense, you are not allowed to vote.
Thank you.
And with that, also, we don't have to stay the entire time.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can leave whatever you want.
As fun as we are.
Yeah.
Okay, so our audit presentation, Laura. Welcome back.
Thank you.
See the podium? Yes. It's numbers and stuff.
Most exciting part.
If you can make it through this, you're fine. So, um, I'm Laura Fisher with the HMW CPA firm over, uh, in North Bend. And, um, '76 graduate, Marshfield. Let's see, I've got the audits here, this is not really even. Do you guys have these? So there's two of them, one, the smaller one is the resource link to Charter School, um, because it's a separate legal entity, but it is included in the big one.
Oh, it is. You don't have the separate small one, I left those at my office. But they're a component unit, so they're in here.
Yeah, so it's, it's a, it's also a fund of Coos Bay School District, but if it gets legal, we have to pull pages out, with its own financial statements all by itself right there. Nothing to report on that one. Let's see, on Coos Bay School District, inside these, and if you got a digital copy, there should be audit separate letter, it's three pages, it's almost all boilerplate, uh, required communications that we need to make to, um, all our audit clients. The only thing different on here is about in the middle of the second page, there's some discussion on some adjustments that were made during the audit. Some as a result of audit, some as a result of things that Marina called to our attention, and I'll talk about those in a few minutes. Um, I do, I think you've all been through audits and set up your presentations before, so I'm not gonna go a whole lot into the details of what's in here. I do want to remind you that we audit under four different auditing standards for this district. One of those covers the numbers, uh, one of those audit standards, auditing standards covers specific, uh, things for Oregon, such as statutes and the compliance with the, uh, uh, administrative rules. One of those, these government audit standards requires is that we audit compliance against grant agreements, um, contracts, laws, rules. And the final one, the fourth one, requires that we do a special single audit, it's the federal government audit on some of your larger federal grants. So the compliance part of the testing, which basically three-quarters of that is, after we get through the numbers, it's almost all compliance testing. And we're testing things to see, like, make sure that the district complied with Oregon budget law. Because you have to publish your notices timely, you have to use the right forms, you have to make sure the numbers are in there. Um, we also audit to make sure that the district invests money in things that are, um, illegal. You can't invest in Bitcoin or cryptocurrency, such, uh, things like that, they have to be qualifying investments. Um, you're good, by the way, and all that. Uh, we also test to make sure that procurement policies are followed. And, uh, everything's tested, so, that's tested really well. For the state school fund factor, we test student attendance, because obviously that's a big, a big, uh, part of the formula in the state school funding. We also test to make sure that the miles that students are driven, or driven to and from school are calculated correctly, because miles driving them to athletic events is not allowed to be included in that, so we test that. We test, make sure that the years of experience that your teachers have are being reported to the state correctly, because that's a component of the state school fund. And we, um, let's see, I think that's it, teachers, miles, students, that's it for the state school fund. Uh, and then for the single audit, we tested the ESR grant, because that's a big one in the feds, and said you shall test the ESR grant no matter what. So, um, we notice here, a couple of pages I wanna call to your attention in the financials here. On page two, which is a little ways, it is the first page of the letterhead, and the second page of the letterhead. First page. Second paragraph is our opinion report. And this opinion says that these financial statements are presented fairly in accordance with county principles generally accepted in the United States of America. And that's the highest level of an auditor's opinion that you can get. So, congrats on that. Following all this stuff, there's a lot of footnotes that get into excruciating detail about the financial statements. I want to flip to page 42, which is the very last of the footnotes, there's the last two pages of footnotes, it looks kinda like. Right at center in page 42, note B discusses prior period adjustments. So what this is, is after discussions with Marina, we agreed that there should be two adjustments, two correct errors that were made in prior years. One of them related to last year, when I say last year, 2122, when there was a receivable submitted to the state for some grant that was rejected by the state, was part of the, one of the capital construction, uh, projects. They said you can't use that. So that receivable had to basically be written off, and the way that's done in governmental accounting is to change the beginning balance, like that receivable was never there to begin with. So it didn't affect the current year at all, except the beginning balance was lower, therefore the ending balance was also lower, by the amount you see in the footnote there. We also, Marina, noted an error in the, uh, the amount of the value of the improvements, capital projects have been done recently, that did not match up, where the schools' fixed assets, capital assets, were not matching what the contractor was showing. And after looking at that quite a bit, decided that the contractor was actually correct. So those records were adjusted to match the contractors. Again, it didn't hit your financials on the budgetary side at all, it increased your assets on what we call full accrual financial statements, which, um, carry your asset, all your assets and liabilities, so your net position increased in that one, by the amount, again, on page 42. Um, on page 53 is the schedule of federal awards that the district received. And second column from the right at the bottom shows the total of those awards, a little over $7 million. And we audited the ESR grant, which is the grant section up there that has a little asterisk by it, that's about two-thirds of the way down the page. So that was just over $3 million of those grants that were spent during the year. That audit was fine, no findings whatsoever. Be, oh, well, related but unrelated, the only finding we had is in the very, 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 very last page. The ESR grant got reported as state money, and it's not, it's federal. It just got, um, got in the wrong category, but because of the size of that amount of money that came in, all posted as state revenue, we had to call that a material weakness, because it was obvious that the controls during the year, where those receipts are being posted by one person, somebody's double-checking them, that didn't happen. And that would never, that would never have shown up in the wrong column. So we, we just discussed that there. And that's it, okay, then that, the audit went really well. We really appreciate all the work that Marina went to getting this thing done, and stepping into a new government agency and trying to pick up all the pieces and pull it together for not one audit, but how many?
A few.
Like five or six different audits going on at the same time, she's, uh, she really proved herself. I think she's done good. Um, if you guys, if any questions about the audit, I'm more than happy to answer now, if you've got any, or you can reach me through Marina.
Just again, this was the 2021.
This is a 2223 audit, yeah, so we're seven-plus months.
Yeah.
So there's information in here, which I'm sure Marina has, because we, we have to match the numbers up before she submits to ODE. Um, but this can give you an overview of where you were at compared to your budget. I think it's right after the footnotes, like pages 48 to 52 or whatever, and you can see how well your budget did, because I know that process is probably already started.
It is.
Just wanna be excited.
Just so we know, the controls that were lacking were prior to Marina coming on board, but now, how are we looking in the business office? We're looking great, we've hired a .5 FTE accounting tech, who will be creating all of the deposits, they'll come to me for review. And any that I've done have been double-checked by our AP tech. So, you guys have checks and balances in there now? Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Laura. Thank you for staying on, hope it's all good. Journalism team.
I'm only member man.
Oh.
All right, hi guys, uh, I'm Mia, this is LaVia in My Life.
You say Malia, Malia.
Mia, Malia, in My Life.
Hold on a second, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get it here. Let me get back to the start, where you move the main meetings. Okay. And just tell me when you want me to move forward a slide.
Okay, um, obviously we're the journalism program, I do for. All right, so a little bit about me, um, I've been the editor, uh, for the last two years, and I've been a part of the program, um, for the last four. I started my freshman year, and the, like, first picture at the top there is, like, the original staff that I started on. Um, it was a much lower number back then, it was around nine people, not all the people were pictured in that, um, due to distance learning, but, um, we started out a base of like nine people, and then as, um, after COVID, and as things have progressed, we've grown to a class size of about, of about, um, 29 right now. And then next, my little idea. So, we are current sophomores and current page editors of the Marshfield Times. We kinda do like the nitty-gritty of like making the pages and like adding the page numbers and stuff like that. And we're also a part of the Marshfield Upbeats Dance Team. And we plan on running for editor-in-chief for our position next year, and managing editor. All right, so a little bit about what we do, we put out, um, about seven to eight, uh, printed issues every year. Uh, they're in full color, um, they're about 16 pages, yes. We sell advertisements and subscriptions, um, and fulfill grants to get this money to print them. Um, each issue costs approximately a thousand, um, and a hundred dollars to print a thousand copies. In our journalism program, we learn writing, interviewing skills, digital design, website, um, creation, teamwork, and different, um, skills like that. Um, within that, we've started to progress some of our things like website design. So we haven't always had those, um, skills offered, but we've started to introduce them. Um, and then here's a little video to like pretend of what we do. All right, so we're here to just share some of our accomplishments that we've had this year. Um, so recently, we've won two awards, and we've gained some positive local attention. And, uh, like Mia said, we currently have 29, so 28, we have 29 students in the, yeah. Yeah, so, we got a superior award in Realm. Um, so, schools in 46 states in five countries submitted 375 student magazines from middle school, high school, in like college, um, publications, yes? Um, you can go to the next slide. So basically what this means is we gained, um, 82 to 89 points. And, um, yeah, we won the superior award. So, excited. Um, so our Oregon winners, the Oregon winners were us and the Lewis and Clark College, so that's pretty cool, that's.
We were all there with the college, kind of college? It's pretty cool.
A good college. Very good.
Um, and then our second aw- award was first, first place in the American Scholastic Press Association. And I have that little award right here, if any of you wanna look at it, you can just pass it. So this association awards yearbooks, magazines, um, and then different newspapers. Um, and then they give us some feedback on different parts of our magazine, whether it's, uh, story layout, headlines, that sort of thing. Um, and they're judged on not only quality, but also, um, the value to the community, so how these are perceived in the community's eyes. Um, a little more about it, um, in addition to the certificate, winners are published in awards booklets. The Marshall Times scored 80, 845 points out of 1,000 possible points. Um, and then we're judged on content, coverage, organization, design, um, presentation, and creativity. Um, a shout-out to our sister program, the MHS Yearbook, also won an award last year, they won second place. So that was super cool. We've also gotten attention from the world, so. Okay, so the Marshall Times has published stories in the world. Um, we were recently applaud for winning this year's awards, and the front page article in January, or on January 30th, 2024. Um, do you guys wanna talk about this part? So we plan on working more with the KMHS radio program, and recruit more staff for next year, we are gonna be losing lots of seniors next year, so we're looking to recruit some more people into our program. And, um, continue partnership with the Clackamas Community College Journalism Program, so we can get students some college credits, which is super awesome. And just ongoing improvement, entering contests, gaining positive attention, and inducting more students into Coolin Scroll. Um, and then finally, we'd like to say a big thank you. Um, the Marshall Times doesn't exist without, um, support from our community mainly. Um, and the people that fund us are the community, uh, Coos Bay, kind of that, Coos Bay Community Schools Foundation Grants, uh, annual money from discretionary funds, and then sponsorships from, um, Mr. Lee Ashton. Um, that's all we got, thank you guys. Do you have any questions?
So, like, is there an online version of the Marshall Times as well?
Yeah, so we, um, have recently been updating our website, it's just themarshfieldtimes.com. Um, and everything we publish in our printed magazine is on that website, along with a few additional pictures. And that, and then we also have some online exclusive articles, so, um, and some video for the.
And then, uh, you are both seeing, or sophomores, right? And you're planning on, are wrestling for the editor-in-chief position next year? And then what, do you have plans after this, are you gonna do anything?
Um, I am hoping to, um, pursue journalism at U of O next year. Um, if you guys are on the scholarship committee, remember my name. I really do. Uh, so after this, I hope to pursue journalism at U of O.
Well, my son's, my son, one of his best friends actually was editor-in-chief of the Maha Times, and he actually is now at the Washington Post, he's the editor over in DC, and has a made a great name for himself, and is, is very successful. And so I know, they, that year that he was the editor, they won all these awards as well, and so, good luck. You got a bright future there. He drives a Tesla, so.
That's close.
I was like, well, I guess you made it. Thank you all, thank you guys.
Can I say something real quickly?
Yes.
About this? This is absolutely beautiful, this is one of the, the, the best-looking ISO magazines I've ever seen. This is really good, and I obviously haven't had a chance to read it all, but Bravo for picking subjects that, that are exciting to who your readers are. And that relevance is super important. And if you haven't picked a college yet, don't get it out of here until I get to talking. I got a couple ideas.
Ask her mom, she's not so long anymore. Amelia Shaver. Okay, so now we have our out-of-state department.
Alright, so I really don't know what I'm doing here. I've been asking you, fine people, if I can take a group of kids to Alaska next year on a research trip. Oh, so what are we doing? It would be an eight to twelve day research expedition on a vessel that is approved by the Coast Guard to conduct research. Most of it surrounds tracking animal, plant populations and things like that. So we have long-term data on those populations to see how different things like climate change and yada yada impacted. That's really what it is. Who would be, we'd be going with? So the expedition is led by Bill Urschel, a US Coast Guard licensed captain. The endeavor is a US Coast Guard designated research vessel. In addition to Bill, there will be a second crew member onboard, including the support of the expedition manager, Ramon.
So is this?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't even address that.
The Laguna Blanca School, is that the organization that puts on the program?
No, I am totally sorry. So that is an example curriculum that they did for the Laguna schools. Yeah, so that probably helps add a little context to that. So yeah, and each time of year, each date, they do a different research site. So I don't, I mean, it's next spring, so we haven't hammered all those details out, but that's an example of all of the logistics, the type of research they did. It has all the insurance information and all that fun stuff in there that they sent home with people from Laguna. That's a picture of the boat. We are aiming for spring of two thousand twenty-five. And just some more diagrams. I didn't know what to put on here. I didn't know how long I'd have or how much needed to hear. So when and where would we be going? Again, that's kind of up in the air. It's a significant cost, and one of my goals is to not have it have an out-of-pocket cost to students. So we want to start fundraising now, if possible, which is why I'm talking to you now. And we know that will be somewhere in Alaska. Just not a hundred percent certain on those exact things right now. Who is going? There's two options available. We could do two staff members and five students, or one staff member and six students. And that will depend on, you know, if we have six students who want to go, I believe in providing this opportunity to as many students as possible. But if we don't get six people, we could possibly bring an additional staff member.
Are you one of those staff members?
Yes, ma'am. Who gets to go? It will be application-based. We don't want to just, you know, go out and choose this, the kids we want to take. We want to open this opportunity up to anybody that feels like it might be valuable to them. So the science department will put together an application that has to do with like interest in science, behavior, staff recommendations, and things like that. We're not, we're looking for people who are excited about science and interested in science, not necessarily somebody who just wants to say, hey, I went and did this, so it looks good on the college application, even though it does. And again, we're trying to fundraise everything, so socioeconomic status is another factor. And who gets, who can and cannot go. How much will it cost? It's fifteen thousand dollars for the seven staff slash students. And then that doesn't include the roughly seven hundred dollar round trip airline per student. And why? It provides students with a rare opportunity to conduct real research. It's real science research and the skills that accompany it. Boy, it's way different talking to adults and to these kids all day. It provides students with author credit on a scientific research paper. So everybody that goes and involved will actually get credited with that, which does look good on applications. It provides students with a once-in-a-lifetime experience. It gets students involved in protecting the world around us. And it provides an opportunity for students to lead and work in small, in small and large groups while working towards a common goal. I'll be way better at the question part, I promise. Arnie, what's?
Are there two crew members?
There are two crew members, and then there is one like on at port staff member that runs like the logistics and things like that.
Is one of them a science person that's going to help with the experiments or the?
The captain and the crew member that is on the ship will help with that.
You said that you were going to be opening it up for teacher recommendations and everything. Is there a way to make sure that it isn't just kids that do really well in science and that may not be in the college prep track?
And that goes with, there will be, a big portion of it will be explaining why you want to go. And with our department sharing all of these students, that will be a big part of the conversation because they are actually conducting real research that is going to be published. So we want to make sure we are taking kids who, this is something they want to do, not necessarily something they feel like they have to do to get into a better college or something like that.
Would you consider to get the best applicants, best applicants, maybe do like an in-person little interview?
That's a great idea. Do you sign enough to be one of the people on the board?
Sure.
That's a great idea.
So what's your criteria for the finalists? How are you going to narrow that down?
Ooh, that's a tough question.
A lot of subjective, you know, they do an essay or you do an interview.
And I think a big part of it will be the fact that a lot of, we're going to offer it to seniors first, which I we're going to prioritize seniors, I guess, is a better way to put it. And with us having these students in class, we, for four years, we know who's genuine, we know who gets, has gotten excited in our science classes and things like that. So barring having, you know, like GPA requirements and things like, or you've had to take this X amount of science classes, those can be just as ambiguous in determining who actually wants to do science as an interview. That answers your question?
Sounds like, you know, you've got a lot of things.
Is this something you'd like to do annually? Or is this just a special thing that we're, you're planning?
Right now, we're going to, that's, I might know next spring. Fundraising fifteen thousand dollars on an annual basis is, that's a big commitment. Unless anybody wants to write a fifteen thousand dollar check, I'll start fundraising for the year afterwards.
I will say, you know, we had a number of visits with George Tinker, the Coke Islands, and did some stuff in the Coke Islands, including pasturizing water because they have a dirty water system.
Just love clean water.
That's right. And they, I know a number of those kids, they still talk about that experience. I mean, it is a life-changing experience. And sometimes the best thing to find out is that I don't want to do that. So that's a good outcome for some of those kids. Having been on the ocean more than a few times, there are people who can be on the ocean. And there are people who, they should find out before they get out there that they aren't going to be on the ocean. You can get really sick very long, oh, sick for a long time. So it is interesting how, man, it's all going to be up in the Alaskan waters.
Yes, but we avoid, we avoid storm season. They do their best to avoid storm seasons, and of course, if they're, they monitor the weather all the time. If there's any sketchy waters, things like that, they will, will stay, they would stay in port.
So you aren't going necessarily way out into the ocean like the?
A lot of it is traveling from little site to little site, doing location on a little.
Sleeping on the boat.
Yes, that's where.
That's where they have the nine beds.
That's, that's really what limits the capacity, is the amount of people that can stay on the boat for that amount of time.
Are you going to, when you bring that with, with relationships?
Males and females.
Or, or males and males?
Well, there will be at a minimum a one to one adult for every two students, which I think is about the best ratio we're to get in any situation. And that's, that's a part of the interview processes. We also learn about students and their behaviors and things like that. And can't ever get.
It's not very big boat. So it'd be hard to sneak away.
Oh, there's a lot, a lot of privacy.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking of. Shy about that kind of thing and you want, like, oh.
And those would be conversations we'd have with all the kids when we get further down the road. I really just wanted to get the okay now, if possible, because, no. This is way better than me trying to read off the slides, so.
So we don't need to ask you about a budget. You're not asking for any money.
Right, I'll take it. I'll take it. I mean, we've got the finance director right here. Can you find me a cool fifteen Gs? That wasn't a no, well, I'll take it.
It's crazy to get ahold of OHSU and go up and visit their site and the ship they have. They've got a brand new ship.
Nice.
For their research vessel. And it would be good to get the kids on a boat. They have a little one out here. They have that kind of a research vessel, really.
And we have some in Newport through Oregon State also.
So this is going to be similar, like a twelve-day-ish length of journey?
Eight to twelve. That's what, that's what I was given. That's what I had to work with. Until we get specifics about where we're going to be and things like that. I can't have, I don't have a firm set number of days at this point in time. I was just given the range.
I agree with you programs like that, so.
Okay, I agree with you there.
Perfect. So it sounds like you want to go ahead and do this motion now if you don't have to wait till the end.
I'd be appreciative of that because I still got a draft of the kill.
So we have a presentation. Do we have anyone that wants to make a motion?
One of the little bit we have, we have done permission to do this.
So good.
I'll second it.
Alright, thank you both. Any other questions or additions, comments?
Love to hear, if I'm on this trip, I'd love to hear back.
Well, I'll make sure somebody gives a nice presentation like, like the year, excuse me, journalism bit.
Let's take a vote. Adrian?
Hi.
Maddie?
Hi.
Arnie?
Hi.
I go as well. Kevin?
Hi.
Awesome. Thank you, guys.
Have a really good day. And have fun raising money.
One more time.
I'm not going to turn it down.
Okay, I'm up. I'm going to start by going off script. So when I was, I taught for twenty-some years at the high school, and then I got this middle school gig. And I didn't know what I was doing, still kind of don't. But they, you know, the one thing they told me is like, when you're at the high school level, you always get to see where the kids ended their K-12 journey, right? But the middle school, I kind of get a chance now to see a little bit where they are halfway through. So today, to sit here and have Mia, I know Mia for a long time, but to have the two other gals, Malia and Myla give a presentation as sophomores, it's pretty cool. Just to see them kind of grow. And those two gals were, the one year that we had at seventh grade, a blossom gulch before we had to do building build. So they were with masks in twelve-person cohorts for half a day of school, the dark ages, and really kind of a cruddy time, but a group of kids that I'm always going to remember. So to see them next year battling for the editor in chief job and continue to see them grow, it's kind of cool right now in my position to see where they're going to end up. So off script, but I thought I had to say it. And they're gone now, but anyways. Maybe they're still, maybe they're still listening because they have nothing else to do tonight. Hey, thanks for having me here tonight. Going to talk a little bit about Marshall Junior High. Don't plan on showing any data with you because we can do that at the next data meeting. Today, I just wanted to give you some highlights about what we've done this school year at the junior high. So here we go. This is our third year down to the new building, newer building. We've added some new things. We have, one thing that I enjoy about when we get new families into the area is when they get the list of electives. And they say, wow, this is quite a bit for junior high, especially for something this side of the school. One of the pluses is that we have Marshall High School right here. It's also kind of one of the negatives because we have to walk up the stairs. But one of the positives is that we have all the extra choices that the students have, and that's a big bonus for us. This last year, we, last year, we had about thirty, maybe twenty-five kids in one choir class. This year, we've added a whole new section, so we're probably about fifty choir students, which is great because we need to bring back the arts. We've added another section of theater, so we have a junior theater. Now we have a more advanced theater, if you can call it a junior high level. We're adding a knitting and crochet class. There you go. Maybe you come do some guest speak work on knitting, which has been kind of fun, right? And you know, the thing about electives is electives are what brings kids to school. You know, it's kind of about, hey, we got my five core subjects, but I'm going to go chill a little bit in knitting and crochet and these other classes. We added one more section of STEAM, which we have a new teacher doing it this year. And she emailed me the other day, says, I only been doing this for a week, but this is super fun, which is awesome. And then we had a culinary, which is, the high school was blessed to be able to offer the culinary class. Been really popular so far. We get one section. I know our kids would love to have more. I'm sure Chef doesn't want to have more than just one section of junior high kids cooking. Actually, I can guarantee you, he doesn't want one more than that, at least until we get a bigger space. So hopefully, down the line, we're going to be able to work on some facilities upgrades and get a, get the chef a nice, maybe you're, I see you're on the agenda for that later. Is that on your agenda?
Yeah, you're in the budget. It'll be alright.
Okay, so I made the culinary. It's going to be something really cool to do. And the very first thing that we had on there was avid. You know, the high school's been an avid school for quite a while. We've kind of cheated a little bit, and we had a class that wasn't necessarily avid, but we called it Tutor, Tutor Study Hall, but it was really under the premise of avid. So now we are officially an avid school. We have one tutor eighth grade section. Next year, we're going to do a seventh grade. I'm taking a group of ten teachers to Denver this summer. Super, we went to Anaheim last year with a small group. Next year, we're taking a bigger group and super excited about bringing avid schoolwide to Marshfield. One of our goals, and I'll talk about it later on too, has been implementing some of the avid strategies as a school. What else is new to us? You know, the other thing about when I got Marsh, when I, I shouldn't say got it. When we opened Marshall Junior High, and they said, hey Floyd, here's a new building for you. I didn't know that it didn't come furnished. I thought, hey, this is going to be here. There's all this stuff ready to go. Next thing, I have to order tables and desks and things, and it still was a very bare space. So little by little, we've added some things to the school to kind of bring it to life. Some of these things were given to us by the Kuzbay Schools Foundation. Closer to me over here is a brand new trophy case that was put up over, over the break. So that's really new, really cool. Right now, it just has some of our athletic teams, but hopefully a bit, we'll get some artwork in there. Next one over is our gym. You see the gray padding? Well, that's all that we originally had, was just gray padding. But there were big chunks of the wall that were still exposed. And the sideline is really from here to there, and it's pretty close to the wall for junior high kids. And then the corners were really safe, so we purchased more padding. Looks really nice, actually. I added a nice little touch. I was concerned that it would be too busy, but it looks sharp. And then over to the left, the little Marshall Buccaneer sign, that was purchased as well and put up over the break. That's in the gym. Down below, we have some grass from the Kuzbay Schools Foundation to help with our stairwells, which is something that we need, hard to believe that we have to direct junior high kids, which weighs up and down. But that's also a couple of little additions to our school over this year, last year. Next slide, couple more things. That's also a new sign from the Kuzbay Schools Foundation. You can't see it very well, but those are some batminton nets that our PE department bought. I remember as a kid at Marshall in Stan Solomon's class, we had freshman PE. We had these, we had batminton tournaments that were super fun, super awesome. Equipment's probably the same stuff that Stan had thirty-five years ago. So they purchased some new things that are portable. So today, during this nice day, we had some batminton nets outside on the turf. So the PE classes were batminton outside, batminton inside, super cool for the units. So those are nice additions to our school, and this was thanks to the Kuzbay Schools Foundation. Other gains. When we started in two thousand twenty-one, the year that we probably needed it the most, right after COVID, we had one day of mental health therapy from a mental health therapist. The next year, we were able to get three, and this year, we actually started, we're up to four and a half days. So for four and a half days, we have a mental health therapist in our school, and she's got a full caseload. She's busy. The other half of the day, she's over at Mila Coma serving those students. So that's awesome. That's awesome. We have our. Student involved in athletics, we've been really fortunate to have a lot of kids involved in athletics. It's been great. So far today, we've had three hundred and twenty registrations out of, well, you know, some of those kids are doing three sports, and so it's the same kids over and over again, but a lot. We have four volleyball teams. We have five boys' basketball teams. Now, for me to be also the athletic director, it's been a little tough to. Now for me to be also the athletic director, it's been a little tough to schedule these teams, especially in this area where it's a little hard, but participation's been great. For the second or third year in a row, wrestling team is large, especially and with coed numbers as well. Next one is just, yeah, so we started the school year with Dr. Herbert, who's the athletic director at Southwestern Oregon Community College. And he has his own little, he goes and presents about, in his slogans, be better. And so we did a presentation for our fall athletes' parents to talk about how you can be a better parent with athletics, you know? Me, for my first one, I wasn't a very good one. I listened to Coach Herbert and learned a lot about, you know, the car ride home and that kind of thing. So that was a really big plus and very successful for us at the school. Next one. Well, those are our four volleyball teams. We can move on there. Student life, student recognition, staff recognition. We've had a couple spirit weeks. You can't see what those are. I don't even know what they are in the middle there. We also have red ribbon week, which is, which is kind of right around October. So every door in the school gets decorated with different themes. This one's about, you know, drugs. Says, don't get wrapped up in drugs and they wrapped up the door. The other one. I can, I can't read, but it's, there's some colors in there, so.
Celebrate the journey of life, live drug free.
There we go, David. Nice work.
I got it up here.
Okay. We go on to the next one. We have clubs and not as many clubs as I'd like quite yet, but we're growing. One of our most involved clubs is our native student club and they meet on Thursday multiple times a month. Bree Landrum, who may be speaking later today, she's on the agenda. She does an awesome job with those kids. We have a big group of students. Now, they're there probably for the arts and crafts, but they also come for the pizza that she brings. You can't see the pictures very well, but on the far left of things is just a picture of them eating. And then they have, they're doing beadwork and doing some necklaces and other things. And then Bree does a great job of talking about the culture. Over on their far right was one day they did a community cleanup. So they were up on this hillside cleaning the campus, which is very much needed. Yeah. Student recognition programs, not necessarily every month, but a couple of times a year, we pick a theme and we call the parents and we have an assembly where we recognize the students, kind of like other schools do. Give a quick shout out to the kids, talk for about 30 seconds about each one, take a picture with the group and then we move on. Down at the bottom, they all get like a little cinch bag if they're one of the chosen ones. Far left, same thing bulletin board about the theme for that month was integrity. Last week, we had National School Counseling Week. Every morning, we started off with a student reading a message about our school counselor, which is Margie Kegley. If you know the last name, Kegley, right over here. Just so happened, I was taking a picture of Kendall here giving the little talk and then Margie came over and answered the phone. So it was perfect right here for the pictures. There's a picture of Kendall talking about Margie and thanking her for the work she does at our school. We have academic competitions. We have three now that we participate in. OBOPH is the one we've been doing for quite a while. Another one of the fun things that I get to do is be the moderator for some of these OBOPH competitions. We had one last week and our girls are, not our girls, our team is traveling to North Bend next week. No, that's not true. They're going on Wednesday to North Bend for an OBOPH competition. Super fun. Math counts competition's been around for a long time, but this is going to be our first year that we're participating in it. So on Friday, we're taking a group of seventh graders to Bandit to participate in math counts. Super excited about that. And then the last one was the Oregon Game Project Challenge was last year when I presented, we had just got that going in the second, in the second semester. This year, it's been a full year class. In the spring, that group of kids are going to go to Western Oregon University for the challenge. And we have about 25 kids in that classroom where they design video game things. And sometimes I'll go in there and they're like little Frogger simulators and all kinds of weird little things that are really cool and things above what I can do, which is exciting and fun. Community partnerships, I'll talk about the top two on the right here in a bit, but we've been reaching out to some community partners. There on the left, we have B and T. So what's going on there is that Scott Terrifar, the T in B and T is doing a presentation with our leadership group and he's going to come in and talk about the business. And then our leadership kiddos are going to create a logo and then buy these shirts and then they're going to do the field trip, go to B and T, look at the whole process, the design process, the graphic and the printing. And then they're going to get their design that they created made for them from B and T. Yeah, so that's a nice partnership. Portobiaro down below, they took our life skills students in and they provided them lunch, took them there, fed them. Wanted them to have a great opportunity and that was, that was great. And I got some chila rellano out of the deal too, which is awesome. So anytime that I get fed, it's even better. Top three, just about two weeks ago, our personal finance class did a field trip. You can go to the next slide there, David. Did a field trip to US Bank and they walked down to the bank. They got to know a little about the banking world. There's a picture there. You'd get hard to see of them in the vault room, which they thought was just the coolest thing. And then they went down to Shark Bites and had lunch. Brian Manton, former Marshfield student, owner of Shark Bites, talked about the restaurant business, talked about some of the successes he's had and failures he's had and they had a great time there. And then they finished their trip down to North Bend Library where Michael Gordon, who's a local CPA, came and did a presentation about the accounting world. So a big, long day for those kiddos, but a really successful one. School improvement goals, we have three. Without the one to detail, attendance, attendance is always going to probably be a goal of ours always. We were striving to get better at that. I think we have gotten better. We all know the correlation between attendance and success in school. Number two is academics. Again, need to get better in every facet of academics. Most of our goal is related to the state math test, which again, our numbers were ugly, but then again, we were coming off a pandemic. So they're pretty ugly in a lot of places. And then finally avid, implementing some of the things, starting with the planners, starting with grade checks, no taking skills throughout the school and then we're going to, and then wicker strategies, hopefully to add a little bit more grit and rigor to our academic program at the school. This is a quick little video of our STEAM class, what they did at the end of the year is that they created these robot hands. And you can't see it very well, but they're like little trigger fingers. So they're made out of cardboard, but inside they have like strings attached to their fingers that are controlling these hands. And the final project was to do a cup challenge. And.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Not sure, not sure who we won, but they all, they all had to do these hands in little groups and had a lot of fun with it. Yeah, I think I have one more. No, I don't. There we go. That's it. Any questions for me? Marshall Junior High.
Thank you. So who's the, who's the STEAM class teacher?
So it's Vets and Little Clay Camp and then now it's Jen Winston.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. She's our art teacher, we're not sure her STEAM teacher.
So yeah, I came and talked to you, I think earlier in the year, or maybe it was late last year. Trying to find somebody who would coach a robotics team over at the junior high. If there's somebody who might be interested, they're not sure they want to do it, I might coach that myself next year. We're seeing the benefits right now at Marshfield with the kids who've been in that program for several years. Because that team is just getting better and better every single year. So we'd like to really get them much earlier.
Feed them.
And yeah, and I know there are lots of students who were in the sixth grade over at Mila Coma Sunset would still want to participate. And Mr. Harper at Mila Coma has been nice enough to invite them back if they can make it after school to work with this program.
Yep, I think the job's still posted, so better fly right away. You're hired.
So I might, I might go over and just chat with some of the teachers then and see what's what. You know, even if nobody bites, possibly coach a team myself.
Yep, sounds awesome. Yep. Okay. Okay, thanks for having us.
Thank you all so much.
Okay, CBBA, this is, who do you, Becky? Oh, Lloyd. Hi, y'all.
Hello.
I think I know you all, but I am Becky Crane. And if you haven't heard, we our president is on an unexpected leave and I am taking over as presidency for the time being. So I've done this before and most of you know that I actually, I hate being up here, but I do like seeing you all. So thank you for having me. Okay, so I do just like to give a glimpse of what our members, our licensed members have been doing since we last spoke. Most notably, I think we had like 20 or so, I don't know the number, of teachers that have been helping on the calendar committee. You probably realize that our contract states that it's a joint effort to work on our calendar and there is just a lot to talk about when it comes to a calendar. So Michelle has been wonderful about guiding us. But it always is at least, at least two meetings, if not more, and takes a lot of discussion and a lot of surveys and so on. So had a lot of people step up to help in that area recently. I've only been doing this, again, I mean, I, just to go back a little bit, I was, I've been the president in the past. Most of you also know that. And I was the vice president. So I've been involved, but not at the level of president. So really had to get caught up with what's been happening around our, for our members. And it's been less than a week and I've heard from many and of issues such as all fall under the disrupted learning category. I know prior to COVID, that was a big discussion, disrupted learner. It was kind of new at the time where there were lockdowns happening because of students showing violence and, you know, things that we would do to protect both students and of course staff. In the last few days, I've heard from some of our members that are telling me that they are in crisis mode and are telling me that they don't feel safe. And I am doing my best to listen. I also have been doing a lot of processing because and I was able to remember that my first time at this, in this role, I learned what my place is and what I do with these concerns when they're brought to me. And I, rather than going straight to the superintendent or straight to the board with news such as this, I try to keep it real general when I'm here and keep the complaint process, go through the process of the complaint process. And so we're looking at that. I, the concerns that I was, that I was speaking of, I was able to compile into an email and share with the principal, just to be sure that the principal's aware that the staff is feeling that way and we'll go from there. Hopefully that is helpful and not looked at as me overstepping my, my role. So, but you know, really just truly concerned about some of my concerns. Other than that, I, oh, and I was going to mention that when I sent that email, I also just thought listening sessions, I think can go a long way. And it's made me think of the superintendent and of course the sped director search that will be happening this spring. And I was fortunate enough to meet Superintendent Gardner recently in a meeting and learned of his passions and learned of his, his role here this spring. And, and I know that Kevin and David are taking on that committee. I really hope to be able to talk and determine our role in that. You know, because of course a new sped director and a new superintendent is pretty big. And I think listening sessions would be, would also be great as we look at what we're trying to do. I think that's it. Unless you have any questions for me.
So you, you know, regarding the disruptive learners.
Yeah.
Do you see that sort of spread throughout the district or are there other schools that are having more of an issue with it?
There's a specific school that has reached out to me most. I could, I can tell you that, and I'm assuming that some of you have heard this as well, that, that it's become a common theme once again across the state. I serve on the, our state union board, the OEA board. And they are, they've started a committee to open, open back up a committee for disrupted learner issue in, to find ways of supporting our people better. There's just a lot of dysregulated kids and not enough people to deal with it. And so I don't think it's just one school. I think it's one school that has somewhat organized their thoughts enough to have brought them to me already. But, yeah.
Yeah, there's actually a bill concerning how to keep track of the injuries to staff.
Absolutely, right.
I know I would look at some of the bills are up this 30 days.
Yeah, makes sense, right?
Yep.
It seems to make sense to me.
No, and I remember, I think you were part of the discussions years ago, it was right, right before COVID when we were talking about student behaviors and that was just really making itself more of an issue compared to even concentrating on academic goals as a district.
It's pretty changeable, but here from like math, pretty math behavior, because people are so many students that are struggling.
I can say that there's concern that seems to go hand in hand with just like our new model. We have a new counseling model, for example. We went away, at least at the middle schools or, yeah, the middle, well, we call them the middle schools, Mila Coma and Sunset. But they're no longer counselors in our building. We have PSLI teachers, social emotional learning rooms. And it's a different role for them. So we've also lost our counselors and the role that they took. Some of them had been picked up by these other people. So that's, you know, I think it needs to be analyzed. Is that, is that what we want, considering what we're seeing? Also, our new, our sped model. I, there's a lot of discomfort and changes to our sped model in the last year or two. And honestly, I think there's a lot of people that just question the reasoning and we've not been able to get a good explanation. I think, I think we could use more understanding, more explanation as to why we've changed things and and I think we want to be heard in regard to what we're not seeing at work as well. Maybe it's just growing pains. I don't know, but without having those collaborative discussions, we'll never know. I'm, I'm somewhat here to encourage listening sessions so that we can work together to find out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in life for a vice chairman that you're standing out?
So it's, it's not clear where we'll go after this. Jeremy Berger still holds the position of president and our bylaws state that I would step in as vice president in his absence. He's been elected and we're not unelecting him at this point. So we will wait for either a resignation or we'll wait to find out what's happening. And the only way we would change our, our direction is if he resigned from that role.
Thank you, President. It's good to see you.
Good to see you.
So we must have Bree online?
Correct.
Yes, I'm online.
Okay, so OSEA.
Um, David, were you able to get that link pulled up or should I share my screen?
No, I've got it here. I'm pulling it up.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Good evening, you guys. I'm sorry I cannot be there in person, but the lovely crud has hit my home and my youngest. And so I am home with her today since she's sick. First, I just want to thank my fellow union board members and my peers that are helping me out with, you know, leading the OSEA chapter 33 for consistently showing up and coming to the board meetings every month in, in support and to show that we're standing together in solidarity. So thank you, you guys, for doing that, whether it's in person or online. And so the first thing that I want to open up with tonight is our staff spotlight and I wanted to highlight Stacy. Stacy's an educational assistant in our sped department at Marshfield High School. And so she works closely with students that have IEPs and 504s in the classroom. She's always coming in with just an uplifting attitude and a positive outlook on life in general. And not only is she a great influence for our students, but the morale she creates for staff by doing the little things for them, whether they're, you know, out. by doing the little things for them, whether they're, you know, out due to just life circumstances or maybe they just need a little support or positive affirmations during the day. She's always there to kind of provide that for her peers. And also you may see her a lot working at the basketball games or other athletic events, taking cash and letting you in. And so I just wanted to kind of recognize her as she was nominated by a fellow classified staff member. I'm also really excited. Our chapter has their own scholarship that's awarded to seniors that are graduating. And we've had three seniors from class that are, their parents are classified staff members that have applied and having an interest of applying for the scholarship. So that's really exciting. And we have also established our monthly management meetings. And it's just really nice to have those on the calendar and moving forward as a regular and getting to meet Brian. And instead of, you know, us bugging, bugging Michelle so much, we're able to work and collaborate and kind of, you know, talk about issues that are going on in the district in a collaborative way before they become an issue and kind of problem solving together. So I really appreciated that. With, with that and our last management meeting, and it kind of was touched on with Becky, is that we're just really happy to hear that safety committee is going to become more consistent. Because it's not just about building safety, but they also talk about our incident reports in those meetings. And it does sound like that the time change will go from early morning to something that will be more accessible by more members and staff members. And then also with the union, we've just seen an increase in supporting our staff in schools as well as in collaboration with our HR and admin on providing support for our classified staff. And sorry, I'm not in, in person again, but if you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Are you okay?
Thank you, Bree. I really always appreciate the staff spotlight. And it's really nice to, to see the face to the, and put the name there out there so I can say, hey Stacy, you were on the board meeting screen. We learned all about you on Monday night, so.
It's nice for me too, because even though I might know somebody's name, I don't always know their face too, you know, because we do kind of have a larger school district. And so I think it's, it's a great way for not only you guys to kind of meet them, but our community that watch the board meetings and for also fellow classified staff that typically don't get out of the building that they work in.
Yes, absolutely agree. Any other questions or anything? Well, thank you so much. Okay, so moving on, we have Melinda, art presentation. Didn't even know you were back in doing art. I thought you were over doing something with more bend and.
No, I'm interim. We still have that position open. So anyone know anyone that I'm good with? So yeah, I've been, until we hire someone, I've been like, still overseeing and doing my other stuff too.
Oh, no.
So yeah. It's okay. Okay, it's been fun. I still, I enjoy like seeing the kids a lot more. So that's my favorite part about it. I want to start off and just tell you I love numbers. So currently, right now, this school year so far, we've had 317 kids that qualified for McKinney Vento services. I just hired one today. And then currently actively enrolled in our school are 261 right now. So that's still like a good chunk of number. And then our last year's numbers that came out, we were, it's not a good thing, but we were number eight in the state of Oregon for how many kids that qualify for houseless services. And that's over 12% of our student population. So we have a huge amount of houseless kids in our area. But I think it's really great that the Coos Bay School District really sees the need for wraparound services. And how can we support our kids in making sure that they don't have barriers to their education and making sure that they have every equal opportunity as kids or students that have stable housing. So we have the art project. It's great. I see some new faces. So I'll go over my spiel a little bit more. So our project is a drop-in center where we serve houseless children, youth and their families within Coos County. And we're able to do that because Coos Bay School District, they fund their building, do the utilities and staff it. And then how we're able to get all the supplies and stuff is through grants and donations. So that's how we're able to serve the whole county. And some of the things that we do at the ARC is we have clothing, hygiene, bedding, tents, tarps, free laundry services, which is great. We've had, we usually have families every day doing laundry, maybe twice a week. We have free showers. There's only, besides us, there's two other free places to get showers. And they're usually what, 10 minute max and ours is 20 or 25. So yeah. Which I did not realize it till some families came in. They're like, it's only 10 minutes at the Deveraux Center. I was like, how about you just come here? You have children, it's family friendly and they have a lot more. I saw, I went to the Deveraux Center the other day and I was like, oh, this is like a small area. And ours is a lot bigger, so there's a lot more room. So that's really great. And then also we help, I think it's a really good place for families. I've noticed a lot more this year where we have a lot of unaccompanied youth or families that have never been in this situation before. So making sure that they're all on OHP, food stamps. If they're applying for different kind of housing, how long they've been here, making, making sure that they reach those qualifications or have those qualifications, so then they're not wasting their time and getting their hopes up. So that's our biggest thing. And then also we've been helped, we still have a grant and we're helping our kids get driving lessons, which is huge. A lot of students have asked me to help them personally and I'm a horrible driver. And I was like, I should not be the one that's teaching you at all. So we're, I think so far this school year, we've helped 12 kids, which is a good amount. And like, it's five lessons. So it's once a week usually, and that's a lot of commitment for some of our kids that don't always have the phone, don't know where they're staying, making sure that we can reach them in time to get them to their driving lesson. So it's been really great. And then so far this school year, we've done our annual backpack event. We gave out over 500 backpacks within the county. So each of the schools, Merle Point, Powers, Bannon, everywhere got their backpacks this year. And then also we did our annual present giveaway that we did. We did trees in all the schools. And we had over 11, no, not 11, 111 kids, which was equivalent to around 780 presents that the MHS charity program wrapped, that I wrapped love this year. So excited. And it was, it's been really great having them. We get tons of donations, like I told you, like our back to school event, we're going to do a hygiene event. All these things would not be easy for us to do without this program. It has been so helpful having them come in, like, I'm pretty sure like Spencer and me, I know how to sort clothes real well, how to hold them, how to do a whole bunch of different things. And it's been really great just them consistently coming. And it's been great because overall, if they weren't there, we would have to do it. And I remember when Barbara and I used to have to do all that. And I'm thinking, how do we do that and talk to families all in one day and try to keep up on all these donations? And I did the hours so far, you guys had that 434 hours, like through the whole charity program. So it's really great. And there's, I mean, I can, and this is probably consistently across, they're all like doing a lot of averaging, like probably 15 to 20 hours so far this school year, which is a lot on top of their schoolwork, all of their like extracurriculars that they do, and they're still coming in consistently to volunteer. So it's just been really awesome getting to know them and then helping out their community at the same time. I think that's just that I have written down. Does anyone have any questions for me? Oh, and then also we're, we're located directly behind Marshfield High School between the Witchhop and Theater. Please feel free to come in anytime to get a tour. Usually we have students in there and we, I, they love giving tours all the time. Monday through Thursday, 1 to 5 p.m. You can just stop in.
I have a couple of questions. I noticed that the change in terminology from homelessness to houselessness, is there a reason?
I'm just going by what ODE is going by.
Okay, and then second question is in terms of donations, total donations. For what age range?
We serve the whole family, so we do pregnant all the way up until adults. And then whatever, and then we've, we've been having a lot more donations. So we've been actually donating, like any of our extra clothing that we have, we've even given them to like, for example, the Bannon Community Youth Center, the Boys and Girls Club, taken them over to Hillcrest in North Bay because they needed extra clothing. We had like an abundance and taking it to Relief Nursery. It's just anywhere that need items that we have an abundance for, it's been really great. Or even we get donations for motels with blankets and everything. We'll take some to the safe project and to other transitional housing that we have in this area. So it's been really good, able to alleviate some of that stress with getting these items for other community partners that we have.
That's awesome. I just want to make, I have a number of friends out in the community. Many of them know you, which is a really good thing. I mean, it's really, I mean, you, you have coordinated, especially now with North Bend and with the county, a real understanding among the number of people who needed to understand that we have a homeless or houseless problem. And that there are ways for them to help. So I just want to commend you for what you do as a person. You have really highlighted the kinds of things that need to be highlighted. So not just those of us in the board, but people out in the community actually have a better understanding of those. And coordinating with all the different agencies that are trying to do the same thing. I don't know what they would be doing as well in our community if it weren't for you. So I just wanted to make sure that I mentioned that. Thank you.
Thank you. I mean, honestly, like I, I couldn't do it without our, like our, like I've been working here for nine years. I can't believe, nine years in March. And honestly, like I couldn't be able to do those things if you didn't give me the freedom and let me try these new things out that maybe I couldn't have in different settings. So that's really like, thank you for letting me just see what happens and how can we serve and help our community out as best we can.
Great evening. Good for the presentation. Continue doing the great work. Don't burn yourself out though.
No, we haven't. We're all good.
Little Pirates, thank you.
So, Little Pirates, two of their classrooms, in honor of school board recognition month, which I realized was last month, they were working on it last month. And this was the next board meeting we had. I was so used to having them every week that, you know. So they put together two books for you of what, drawings from their students and what they like to do. I do have the hard copies of the books over there, but I thought it would be difficult to share that in a meeting. So I created a slideshow with all of their pictures. So that's what I will play for you now.
And it was nice, that very front page, they're already learning at Little Pirates.
Yeah.
The one pirate letter.
Uh huh.
I love that. It's almost believable. I think I recognized one of those notes up there.
And I apologize it's not larger, but again, the, the hard copies are over there. If you want to take a look at them before you leave and see what they wrote. And then also I would mention that the Destination students, I put this up here on the. They created this for you as well.
Thank you, Little Pirates, and thank you, Destination. Okay, we have offense Adams for superintendent search calendar.
Very good video. Awesome. Well, Superintendent Brick, or I'm sorry, Chair Brick, Superintendent Gardner, today board. It's a pleasure to be with you. So tonight we're kicking off your search process, your superintendent search process. And so I have a few check marks that I need to, I need to fill here. I want to check in and see if the board has declared the vacancy formally, taken a vote.
Probably not.
David would be the one to answer that. He has our minutes.
Do we need to?
We have not.
Yes.
Yes. So let's go ahead and declare vacancy effective July 1st of 2024.
Do you need a motion for that?
Yes.
I move that we declare vacancy in the superintendency of the Coos Bay School District as of July 1st, 2024.
We have a motion on the floor. Thank you, Addie. Do we have a second? Adrian, any comments or none? Vote, Adrian.
Aye.
Addie.
Aye.
Barney.
Aye.
I vote aye.
Aye.
And motion carries. We're done.
Thank you. So the next check mark I have is that I need a formal vote from the board to retain OSBA as your search consultant.
All right, another motion.
So did we do that?
Didn't we really do that? Yeah, I thought we did.
We already did that.
Help us out.
If it's already done, then we're, then we're good. Now I'm checking it off.
I believe what the motion was, was to allow Kim and Brian to negotiate a contract with the OSBA, which I think amounts to the same thing.
We're done.
Yeah.
We're done.
All right. So the next piece is that I'd really like to go over the, the search calendar. And I'm seeing that you have a, have a bit more business to do. So I'm sure that you have copies available to you and that you've had an opportunity to review that. One of the things that I, I want the board to consider, and I don't need a decision tonight, is whether you want to have an open search or a closed search. Had some discussion with the superintendent. He suggested that it may be advantageous to go ahead and do a closed search. There are some advantages to that. And that being that you may be able to attract some candidates that are higher tier and that want to protect the position that they're in. And by maintaining a confidential process throughout, you only announce the final, the, the person who's your top pick. And that's the end of the process. And everybody's identity in the process is kept confidential. There's some trade-offs with that. The trade-off is, is that the community has a little bit more trouble understanding what's happening. And so the board would need to have a community committee to come alongside and interact with your, with your finalists. But you wouldn't have a more broad and open process at the end where we could have a community forum where a broad cross-section of community and staff could interact with the candidates. So that's the trade-off. So you don't get that, that, you know, community engagement or the community engagement is somewhat limited. But you may be able to access. Uh, but you may be able to access some candidates that, uh, that might not otherwise apply. So, and that's some decision I need tonight. Uh, that is more of the finalist process, but I wanted to put that on, in, you know, on the table for the board to think about. So.
So in that process, you would have a committee of local residents, uh, teachers, others that get all that information as we go through it. Uh, but they will also be saying confidentiality, they weren't going to share with people. Is that right?
That, that is correct. We would have everyone involved in the process under a confidentiality agreement. That is correct. Is there any advocacy for that or any thoughts around that? If you want to sit with it for a while, that's fine and we can come back. We're going to be meeting, uh, very fairly frequently over the next few months. So, uh, you can give your feedback later.
Discuss. As I'm looking out into the audience.
That, that, I think that we didn't do that last time and we didn't get a lot of people, um, who were in jobs. Uh, it makes me very concerned because, um, I, I do know that there are a number of superintendents out there who may be looking for jobs, but they aren't gonna, in the market, they're not gonna let their name out there. So I, it makes, it's hard, I think it's something we really have to think about. But we have to be very careful in getting a good committee that has a good representation in order to make sure that they feel like there's more people inputting in. I, I, I see both of them. And if you end up with not good people who have done this before, it makes it harder. So anyway, worth conversation.
No, I, I, I agree, especially considering our timeline for this is fairly compressed. Like we don't have a lot of waiting for a lot of applicants. And, and kind of need to get the largest pool we can. Yeah.
So in the closed version, there's only one candidate presented. It wouldn't, could we, could we amend it so that we presented the top two to the community?
You could. We would need to get an agreement from all the candidates, uh, regarding that. But, and we, we could do that if that, if that's important to the, to the board. And so in a typical process, it's open and only the finalists are publicized. So typically only three candidates, uh, get their names publicized. But of three, one gets chosen, so two are left out in the cold and their names are out there.
Last time we only had two.
Well, we have three.
Well, yeah. Yeah. So we have time on that. So.
Yeah, and there's no hurry on that. We have, we have some time to make that decision. So then I, I would love to get feedback from the board on, on the composition of the calendar. Uh, I, you know, someone said that this was in a compressed calendar and that is indeed the case. Um, I've squeezed all the time that I could comfortably get out of it, uh, to come in on time, uh, for a July first start. Um, and so, and a lot of the compression is at the front end. And so I just want to get some feedback from the board. What are you seeing that, that you, and particularly what you, you would like adjusted? And the other caveat I could say is that this is a plan and it's not written in stone. And so we can change it on the fly as needed, you know, and, and often we do change these up a little bit. So, and some of these dates are TBD and that is normal. And so, um, don't feel that after you vote on this, that you're locked into this calendar. We can, we, we will adjust it to meet the needs of the board. I heard that it looks good. And no one's throwing tomatoes at the TV, so.
Yep. I mean, like you said, we can adjust as needed. We've already got some TBDs on there, so it's like we're gonna, we got all the right spots, so.
On the, on the top of page fifteen, um, I had looked at Brian's calendar and the fourth, out of the second and the fourth, the fourth would be a better date as Brian would be traveling on the second. Um, so if that's agreeable for everyone, that's when I would.
Say the fourth.
I would say the fourth instead of the second, if that works for everyone else.
I won't be in New Orleans, but I believe in you.
Where are you going, New Orleans?
What?
Where are you going, New Orleans?
Uh, I'll leave the second.
To the second.
No, or, 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 I mean, or the first, I think, either one of them.
So you're gonna have to forgive me on virtual, which day, which, uh, date are we looking at specifically?
Be the fourth, because Brian is here on the fourth. So, so top of the page fifteen, the two dates on the very first box, April second or fourth, you can take, cross off April second. It will be April.
Yes.
The screening phase.
Got it. That is very helpful.
There's a motion to accept the calendar.
Do we need a motion right now to set the calendar? Is that what we're looking for?
Yes, we are. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. We have a second. Thank you, Arnie. Thank you, Addie. Any comments, questions? Kevin, something to add to the question?
Oh, I was just checking with the dates with our current superintendent on the transition dates for July.
Really? Are your bags packed, Brian?
No, I want to make sure he's, he's here.
They're already packed.
No, I want to make sure he's here for part of the process.
Yeah.
If, if you got a hire in mid-May, you know, then I'm going to start working that person.
Okay.
You know.
So we'll have to wait till July.
Right, and if, and if you want me to work with whoever it is past that, we can probably work something out with that.
All right, any other discussion? We have a motion on the floor. Are there none? We're gonna go for a vote. Adrian.
Aye.
Addie.
Aye.
Arnie.
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Kevin.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right.
Okay, we have an approved calendar. Thank you very much. So my next steps is I'm going to work with my staff. We're gonna send a, uh, survey link to the board secretary for distribution. You'll notice that that survey window is fairly narrow. So I'm sorry, David, but it's gonna require some probably multiple communications and really pushing people to fill out that, that survey to get that information in as quickly as we can. Um, I could probably ease out that twenty, uh, that deadline for the twenty second, but that's something David and I can work out, work on, um, offline. So with that, um, if there, are there any questions that I can answer about the process?
Who does that survey need to go to?
Everyone. So it's gonna go to staff, it's gonna go internally, and it's gonna go to your school communities. So all your parents, they can go to community stakeholders as well. So you can send them to folks in city governments, uh, county health, any of those folks. So it can go to anybody. We'll take all the input we can get. Any other questions on process? Any part of it?
Nope.
Okay. Hearing none, then I yield back to the chair. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Vince.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time this evening. I hope you have a great evening.
Yep, you too. Take care, folks. Bye bye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Vince.
All right, up to the fun part. Marina, we got budget calendar.
Hello, yeah, um, budget calendar. It is in your package towards the end. Um, I essentially wanted to put out a schedule that is in accordance with local budget law. Gives you all the dates that they're publicizing, the ED one. You notice that budget committee meetings. You will notice that the schedule is significantly different than, um, the last few years at least. The last couple of years, the budget committee meetings was just one meeting and the budget hearing was just one meeting right around the end of June with a new superintendent, a new business manager, some new budget committee members. I thought, let's give us all some time, get that done, start process in May. It'll give us two budget committee meetings to allow for more conversation and more, um, possible input from the budget committee.
If needed.
If needed. And then it will allow us to adopt the budget at the regular June board meeting rather than add an additional one right for the end of the fiscal year.
I'm open for that, yes.
Great, thank you. Um, and so you'll see that the first budget committee meeting would be the, immediately after the May board meeting. So that would be Monday, the budget committee would be Wednesday. So at that point theoretically, we would know who the incoming superintendent would be as well. So. They don't overlap.
Okay, so we need a motion for this because I see it under our action items. Um, we can, we can go ahead and do that now.
This is moved to adopt the calendar, the budget calendar.
Yes.
Then, yes.
I mean, most.
All right, thank you, Addie.
I'll second.
Thank you, Arnie. Any other questions in the session? All right, let's take it to a vote, Kevin.
Aye.
Arnie.
Aye.
Addie.
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye as well. And motion carries.
Wonderful, thank you all.
Thank you, Marina.
Onto enrollment. You will see that February enrollment has decreased about sixteen students, down to three thousand and thirty-one. This is still up from our end of last year in June, which was three thousand and three. This is historically the time that we will decrease because of the end of the term. So typically we see a larger decrease in February, but then it'll stay relatively consistent for the rest of the school year. Um, it might drop a little bit in May and June, but we are on track to be pretty consistent with last year's ending with June. We're, we're pretty on par with our numbers from last year. We're, we're different by about two students from last year in February. Does anyone have any questions on enrollment? No? Okay, we'll move on to our monthly financials. So for the general fund, you will see, good news, we have beginning fund balance has entered because we have an adopted budget or adopted auto reports. Um, so you will see that the beginning fund balance was actually seven million, which was higher than our budgeted estimated six point five beginning fund balance. Great news, um, we are projected to get additional state revenue because of the state school fund increase that I have not, you'll notice, done a supplemental budget for. Um, my hope is that we will continue to operate with the current allocations and not actually spend any of that additional state school fund money and it will go into the ending fund balance. Um, right now, we are not projected to go over any of our current allocations, so I will continue to watch that, but I don't see any need to increase the budget at this time. We don't look to spend any of those funds. We have enough money in the general fund to reallocate the appropriation transfer to allow us to pass through to our charter schools without doing a supplemental budget. So, great news, we are not looking to be over in any function in the general fund. The special revenue funds, you'll see there are two functions that it is projecting we will be over. That is construction and facilities acquisition and construction. That is because of carryover from last year's grants as well as increased allocations for current year grants. However, we are not going to be spending all of those funds and we are not actually projected to, um, spend over any of our current allocations. But again, there's enough allocation appropriation that it is with under the ten percent budget transfer and we can choose, um, to do a resolution and just move up to ten percent of that fund rather than do a supplemental budget. So we're looking good on here, but you might see a transfer, um, I would guess April or May if we are getting close to any of those allocations. Onto debt service. It's great, we pay all of our debt at the beginning of June, so you won't see any, any increases. We budget for our exact debt service expenditures. So we're on track for that. And then the capital projects funds. We did have a lower than anticipated ending or beginning fund balance for this year. That's because we ended up getting a lot of invoices and work done before July one. So we just spent those projects last year, but we weren't over budget. Um, and we are on track with all of our bond funds. We are not projected to spend over any of them. Any additional spending will go to S R three for our capital projects. Then it'll come in check. Does anyone have any questions? No. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I will note the next item will be Brian Gardner filling in for Chad. I forgot to make that change on the agenda.
Brian, please.
Yep.
Little literacy grant.
Well, the, the team is actually up at a conference right now learning, um, about some little literacy stuff and also working on some RTI things. So that's why Chad's not here tonight. Um, and this is very similar to what you approved last year. Um, but, uh, the grant says that it will be presented to the board each year and approved. So, um, the grant's just over two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. This will give you the, the full breakdown. This one pager is really the best. It's, it's really about putting some resources in, in K three literacy. And, um, and the, the TOSA, you know, there's a teacher on special assignment doing, just focusing on literacy and also doing a lot of training for the, a lot of the EAs who are carrying out some of those, those literacy pieces. Um, the summer school, um, and then, um, you know, the, you know, the extra support for the RTI issue, which is basically about, uh, response to interventions. So monitoring that, that's really important for, for Coos Bay because historically you've had a very large identification of, of special ed and that's usually as a result of not having a lot of interventions within the regular school. So, um, teachers want to take care of kids, so they're gonna get them identified if that's the only intervention available. So the RTI is, is general, is, is the general intervention. They go, is available to all kids regardless of whether they're identified or not. So that's really one of the early steps that needs to take place to, to start getting that other portion of your population kind of under control. So.
Thank you.
So we basically need the board to approve the plan.
Any questions?
I will look at the little literacy grant. It came out for another eight months.
Arnie.
Is this the application for receiving the grant?
Yes.
Uh, give a motion. We have a second for Kevin. We have the discussion. Let's take a vote, Kevin.
Aye.
Addie.
Aye.
Addie.
Aye.
Adrian.
Aye.
And we have, we have any other action items on here?
No, you've taken care of them.
We did them all?
You did them all. And just a quick, quick question on that while, while we're all here. Would you prefer that I put the action item next to the agenda item? Because we tend to do it that way. I kept them in one spot, just.
I, I prefer them that way because a lot of times we will have visitors in to present and we need the action item right away. It doesn't make sense to leave it till the end if they've got a weight.
Okay.
Even then suspense for their out of state.
I know. Exactly. I mean, you don't have to stick yours the entire time for that.
Well, it keeps our views up on YouTube.
We, we, we can still divide out the items that are just presentations and information and then the, then the rest of the agenda would be maybe information with action. It's separate from that one. This is where I've seen it in the past.
Anything else for the good of the order? All right.
Okay.
What? Did you say something?
Superintendent, they closed the meeting.
Yeah, I closed the meeting.
No, we're not done yet. We've got this whole thing.
Oh, man.
You can skip and.
I will be quick. Okay. Um, there's a, there's a couple of things. Um, there's a, there's a couple of things.
Alright, we're going back a lot.
Alright, rock.
One, one of the things that I heard, um, from, uh, folks, from you folks when I first got here was that we hadn't done a very good job of, um, evaluating our administrators. Um, you know, traditionally that has to be done by March first. I do not feel qualified to to go evaluate folks I've known for six weeks. But I also felt like it, you know, that it's, it's not a good idea to do nothing. Um, so during the last admin meeting, I, um, gave them a self-reflection questions, and I'm asking them to fill those out in the next two weeks. I'm gonna meet with them individually and discuss their thoughts on those those four questions that I asked, and, um, and I will, you know, keep notes and save those for the the next superintendent coming in. I think it would be a rather insightful. So. So hopefully the next time around, what will probably come out of that is you go, you go, each one of those will probably have to go set up the next year. Right? Um, I, you know, I just wanna say that, um, Marina, the, in the business office is really quite talented and awesome, and I'm really excited working with her to, to get the, um, you know, kind of those internal controls in place and working on the processes. And, uh, we were able to, to plug into my former business manager at very low cost to help out. I think she's been useful so far. Um, and if, if I accomplish nothing else, just watching the, the business office all come together, I think, you know, this, next the budget you're gonna see come out in a few months is gonna have a lot more information, a lot more detail for you to make any comments, so. That's pretty exciting. Um, something else I've been working with Chad on, um, and, and, um, Marina about getting the funding together for is doing an extensive, uh, training of our classified staff uh, specifically around, uh, some of the behavioral issues we were talking about. And so, it, it may be for the first time that the entire classified staff is trained up on all of the, uh, the different, uh, processes and methods that have been adopted, but have been spottily, uh, implemented. So that's, looking forward to that. Also met with folks from Whitewater, and I think I understand why our kindergarteners are having issues. They've got their own, they've got the only autism treatment program in Southern Oregon, and it's a great program. Um, but he's also got a waiting list of over a hundred kids, since most of those kids age out without treatment. And they're showing up at our schools without treatment. And so I've got another plan about trying to get some EAs trained up to like an RBT level. Um, you know, if we get some takers, we've got that. And, um, that's all I've got for that. But those, those are the things that we're looking at, are positive and moving forward.
Any questions? I have another. Nope, okay. I'm gonna squat out.
You're almost there.
Yeah, already.
I know.
If Kevin doesn't wanna blab around too long.
I'll cut it, yeah, just. I've been trying to cut it down, zip, zip, zip.
Okay, so we've got a lot going on, facilities committee. Um, we're working on addressing some fuel tank issues over at the transportation building. Basically, they're testing the ground level, the ground determination. And it's more of a, a town thing, right in the district. And then, Millicoma Progress is looking positive. The grease traps are gonna be installed at the schools. It's based off the new city ordinance, and that's gonna be about seven thousand dollars per site. Progressing Health Inspector Concerned by adding hand sink at Little Pirates.
Washing sinks.
Hand washing sinks. And then upgrades the softball facility with some sprinklers. Um, working on a smart grant for Sunset, which is, then it's around ten million, and reapplying for a seismic grant. And then also the propane tank at the high school needs to get moved, and so they're, they're working on those issues along with an audit. Biode is slated for March. And then Montiel kind of brought up about, uh, oh dang it, the food services and stuff that they're trying to advertise going, and Brian with our facilities is, they're trying to find a spot that includes the right amount of power and water, all the little major details of. Those.
Yeah, all the grease trap, all the stuff that, that makes it run, right, yeah.
So we're sitting out with facilities.
There's a facilities meeting tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow.
Yeah.
And I cut a lot out for you.
Aw, alright, and renaming of the softball field that he is seeing.
He was gonna try to get there.
Well, um, we thought we would close the letter with you folks and kind of take the temperature of the board. Uh, because he was going to actually have Bill come, and we thought it would probably be a good idea to only invite him. It was gonna be a positive outcome. So we thought we would propose the idea to you folks tonight, and, and I would try to get some, uh, feedback over the next week or so about your feelings towards that. I did pull, or had David pulled the, um, any, uh, policies on naming fields. You don't have any. You do, you do have a policy on naming buildings. And it's a very short policy, and it basically says, the board will decide what to do. You know, so, um, so you're well within your rights to name field after Bill if you would like to do that, so.
No, but reading about what is done is very impressive.
Actually, I was wondering if the softball field currently is named after somebody here.
It is not.
The softball field.
It is not named. And Bill's wife, Porkey, was a classified person here at the high school until she passed away a number of years ago. She was impressive too with respect to putting in the time, uh, here at the building. His, uh, Bill's brother is a coach in a old school up in Washington. His nephew is now, uh, took from tight end position with the Miami. So he's got an interesting family, um, of people. He's, he has been an amazing volunteer for a long, long time. And it saves us thousands of dollars because he doesn't take any payment, mainly the system. Oh, so.
Twenty-seven years?
Twenty, yeah, twenty-seven years. And he's just really nice. There are a few people who are nice as hell. I'm clearly in favor of him.
Absolutely, I am too.
Yeah, I don't personally know him, so when I saw him, I was kind of thinking it'd be nice if a little survey was put out that people would like to be named whatever, and then they could kind of take a little vote and come after us, but.
As long as we do that with all the other fields, because I know people.
Yeah.
When you talk about women's sports or softball, people are like, oh, I don't know that name typically. And, but other names like football coaches and that, they're like, oh yeah, we know this person, they're great, so we're gonna, we're gonna go ahead and name them. I just don't wanna put a lot of barriers up for naming a, a field that probably not a lot of people are like really care about. So, I mean, this is a guy who put in twenty-seven years. It sounds like he's done.
And the coaching teams say, my writing is again, reaching out to express our strong desire.
Yes.
If you were to check on the last twenty-six years of girls softball.
Exactly.
They would all think this is a good idea. I'm almost positive.
There's one kid left here. What do you think?
What?
What do you think?
What do I think? Um, I played softball for three years, I didn't like tennis, um, and he, like, he still messages me and he's like, hey, I heard you have this issue for now, or I heard you're doing this, I heard you're doing that. Congratulations. He's, um, probably the one, the most supportive people I've ever met in my life. Um, he's one of the kindest individuals. I couldn't say more than to him, so I'd say, yes.
There's our survey.
So do we, do we, do we give?
Yes.
I don't, I don't.
I would ask that you not do the motion tonight, that we would put it on here.
Okay, perfect.
Put it on for next month.
Yeah.
And, uh, it happened here.
I don't know if this convention, I probably, I'm speaking that term, but Bill was also very, um, a very big part of the Boys and Girls Club when we started here.
For years.
Um, the, the baseball association. I mean, it's not just softball, although he's been a very big part of that. Um, just sports in general is very, he's also been a substitute teacher, um, for years and years and years until this year, maybe even, or last year. He's also not that.
Right.
So.
Will you, will you come?
Yes. Oh, yeah, you can be here.
Yeah.
Alright, we gotta have a big party. Let's, let's do it. We gotta celebrate this gentleman.
Let's get a cake.
If, when.
Get a cake.
Yep, we gotta get a cake.
This is one of the best things Bill's done here.
Thank you for speaking up, both of you. I really appreciate your input. Alright, um, anybody wanna do a formative highlight?
We went to the AP, um, presentations that.
It's been sexy.
That was awesome. I saw his presentation, it was very good. Your blood.
Thank you.
Also, we saw Spencer at the MHS charity pageant. We got, um, he was best talent.
I remember, and you were there as well.
So I'm sorry, I remember, I'm sure you've been on work for something.
Oh, you're so. But she loves cricket.
It was a busy night. Um, I had a chance to meet with our interim superintendent and discuss various things. Uh, the other thing this past weekend was the, uh, regional qualifying tournament for the high school robotics team. Um, they actually came away with the robot design award. And were, uh, effectively the first alternate for going to the state competition. That did give them an invite to the second chance tournament, which is this coming weekend in Plowman. Um, so they're gonna be attending that. That's the, the two-day Saturday, Sunday competition. So that's a block to them, and you know, just another reason that I like. Or I'm at the junior high.
So will you be applying for that position, or?
Um, well, I can't, I can't apply for as a board member, I'm a volunteer.
I was just gonna, my, I had different plans.
Well, you, you reminded me to every time, and I didn't do it.
It'll be, it'll be a busy weekend this weekend.
Yes, and then with them?
They require two coaches, and I'm listed as the second coach.
Great, good luck. On?
Yeah.
Any other highlights?
There's a lot of them to watch.
I have to say, that's, that is the first award that the robotics team has gotten in, uh, in their league, so.
That's a good one, though, isn't it?
Yes.
Best design, I would think.
Best design.
Yeah.
Everybody's getting awards. We've got some, or, so that's not trouble this weekend or anything.
It's nice to see all the successes in Martha High School and how many just have lost.
It is. It really is. It's fun to watch.
Definitely is.
Never know what sports may do good every year.
Well, you never know what else is gonna be good, you know?
Yep.
And it's fun to see them start putting the downshift.
Yeah.
They know cheer games, all the tips, grander.
All the years, state championships, we love it.
Not sure if I mentioned it, but cheer games can stay stable.
Yeah?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, that's awesome. Now the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.